Leading to order at six o'clock, would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Vice Mayor Walter.
Thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none. Any changes or deletions to the agenda, David?
Mayor, no changes or deletions to the agenda. Did want to note that after the agenda was published, there was a, a letter that was provided to council under item M, Legislative Reports. It's a, a letter of opposition to SB 423, and we'll talk about that when the agenda comes forward.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do we have anyone in our audience that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none.
Thank you, Baron. We have two people in line.
Anyone in the virtual world who would like to make a public comment, please hit the raise hand icon.
Thank you, Mayor. Looks like neither are raising their hand at this time.
All right, we'll move on to C, Communications. Nothing?
No, no communications, Mayor.
Thank you. We have no student liaisons at this point, so we'll move past D and right into E, Proclamations. The first proclamation is Disability Pride Month for 2023. Is there anyone that would like to read it? Seeing none, I will. Did you?
Yep.
There you go.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming July 2023 as Disability Pride Month. Whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated nationally in the month of July and is an opportunity to honor the history, achievements, experiences, and struggles of the disability community. And whereas this month marks the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, ADA landmark legislation that broke down barriers to inclusion in society. And whereas it is important to take time this month to reflect on the disability rights movement and the progress that has been made. And whereas the City of Cloverdale recognizes that one of its greatest strengths is the diversity of its people and believes in the dignity of all disabled individuals, supporting equity and ensuring the acts of discrimination and hatred will not be tolerated. And whereas disabled, disabled individuals contribute to our community's success and strength in a great number of measurable ways. And whereas disabled individuals continue to face discrimination for something out of their control and for being who they are, continue to be a target of violence and harassment, and continue to persist through the efforts of the disabled community and the support of the community agencies, businesses, individual allies. And whereas discrimination on the basis of disability is often compounded with discrimination based on race, sexual orientation, and gender identity, immigration status, religion, and age, among others. And whereas the City of Cloverdale strives to lead in creating a community based on disability equity through its actions, laws, employees, and commissions. And now, therefore be proclaimed that I, Mayor Lans, in the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, do hereby proclaim July 2023 as Disability Pride Month in Cloverdale and invites all to join in celebrating the persistence and achievements of the disabled community.
Moving on to E2, the proclamation for National Night Out 2023. Anyone that would like to read that? And I will.
A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming August 1st, 2023, as National Night Out. Whereas seeing a need to involve both community watch groups and community members in neighborhood safety efforts, the National Association of Town Watch started National Night Out. Whereas National Night Out began in August of 1984 through an already established network of law enforcement agencies, neighborhood watch groups, civic groups, state and regional crime prevention associations, and volunteers across the nation. Whereas National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring its 40th Annual Nationwide Crime, Drug, and Violence Prevention Program on August 1st, 2023, entitled National Night Out. Whereas the 40th Annual Night Out provides a unique opportunity for citizens of Cloverdale to join forces with thousands of communities across the state of California in promoting cooperative police community crime and drug prevention efforts. Whereas the National Night Out event is a year-long community-building campaign designed to heighten crime prevention awareness, generate support and participation in local anti-crime programs, strengthen neighborhood spirit and police community partnerships, and send a message to criminals to let them know that neighborhoods are organized and are fighting back. Whereas local citizens play a vital role in assisting police agencies through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts. Whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And whereas the Cloverdale Police Department has continued their commitment to excellence in service and to working together with the community to keep them safe. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that I, Todd Lans, Mayor of the City of Cloverdale, do hereby recognize on behalf of the Cloverdale City Council, August 1st, 2023, as National Night Out in Cloverdale, and encourages all members of the community to continue to help make our community a safer and more enjoyable place to live, work, and play, dated July 26th, 2023, myself.
Tonight, we have Lieutenant Parker to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, sir.
I'll, I'll come down there. Would you mind if we took a picture with you?
Oh, sure.
I'm gonna let you through first.
Lieutenant? Mayor, members of the council, if I can, real briefly, just want to make sure we invite the community to come out on next Tuesday, August 1st, from 6:00 to 9:00. Our Cloverdale Police Department is, has sponsored a wonderful community event. There, there's going to be a number of activities for, for kids and for members of our community. For those of you who enjoy cornhole, there will be a, a cornhole tournament, and the Police Department will take on the Fire Department, so we'll see who's, who's really best at that activity. I'm, I'm, I'm putting bets on, on the, on the PD, but I want to acknowledge there's going to be a number of businesses present that have, you know, are supporting the event. There's going to be some special characters from the Star Wars series. So it's, it's really going to be a fun-filled evening. It's supposed to be a safe evening, and we're going to also talk about emergency preparedness. There'll be some booths there with information about how the community can continue to be prepared for the next emergency. And over $1,700 in raffle prizes are available. So I want to encourage the, the young members of our community, if they want to win a bike or scooter, to come on down. Concurrently, there is also the Cloverdale Farmers Market that will occur. We'll be closing the boulevard between First and Second Streets. So I, I think between that and the Plaza, it's going to be kind of like a, a Friday night on next Tuesday in our downtown. So I encourage everybody to, to come down and, and join the event. And I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity to interact with our police officers and lots of fun activities and food to, for, for all those who decide to, and join us that afternoon.
Thank you, David. All right, moving on to Consent Calendar. All items under the Consent Calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately.
With the Consent Calendar.
Second. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lans?
Aye. Let the record reflect, passes 4-0. Vice Mayor Walter is absent. All right, moving on to H, Public Hearings. H1, Resolution declaring all weeds growing within the city to be a public nuisance and declaring the city's intention to remove and abate the same upon specified private properties under and in accordance with the provisions of the City of Cloverdale Municipal Code, Chapter 8.16, entitled Weed Abatement.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and good evening. The, the item tonight is before you is, is a resolution declaring all weeds growing within the city limits to be a public nuisance. And it's also intended to declare the council's and the city's intention to remove and abate those upon certain private properties in accordance with the Cloverdale Municipal Code, section titled Chapter 18.16, Weed Abatement. Every year, the Cloverdale Fire District does considerable outreach to the community and property owners to abate weeds. And, you know, it's, it's not so much about removal of weeds as it is about addressing the, the fire threat in our community, though there, there are certainly nuisances related to, to overgrown vegetation. The focus really is about reducing potential fire hazards. So the, the Fire District in doing their, their community outreach really works with property owners to assist them in, in managing vegetation. They have a number of programs and projects to, to do so. But in some cases, for various reasons, property owners do not remove or abate the, the weeds. And after subsequent notice by the Fire District, they provide a list to the city. The city has the authority under the Municipal Code to address those properties. So included in your packet is a resolution which includes as an exhibit to the resolution, assessor parcel numbers for various properties that have been identified either by the Fire District or by the city that are in non-compliance with the city's municipal code. The intent tonight is to adopt the resolution, or the recommendation of staff is to adopt the resolution which would provide staff the authority to provide those property owners with notice that a public hearing will be held at your next council meeting and would provide the opportunity for those property owners to come and comment on the potential need to abate those properties of, of the, the weeds that are considered a nuisance. Typically, what happens once we provide the notice, most, most property owners do comply. We, we recognize this has been a challenging year, given the significant amount of rain that we got late. But with that said, we're, we've moved into fire season, things are pretty dry, and it is critically important that property owners comply. So the list that's included in, in your packet, most of which came from the Fire District. There were some additional properties that were identified by staff, by members of, you know, largely through members of our community that expressed concern about the growth of vegetation or weeds on, on some of the adjoining properties. So the, the action tonight would enable staff to provide notice to those, those property owners and move forward with the code enforcement process and bringing it back to a public hearing at your scheduled meeting.
Thank you, David. Any questions or comments?
I just have a, a comment. You know, unfortunately, we saw a recent example of what can happen with these overgrown lots in yesterday's fire in downtown Windsor. So this is an urgent matter. It really can't be addressed soon enough. So I'll be happy to offer the resolution by title only when we are done discussing.
I just think it's really important.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I can, just one, one point of clarification. I, I said the next meeting, which would be the first, or excuse me, second Wednesday in August, the resolution sets forth that we'd hold a public hearing on August 23rd. So that'd be your second meeting.
Your second meeting. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I'll open it up to the public. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Open up to the virtual and see no hands. So I'll bring it back to the dius.
Offering the resolution by title only, a resolution of the City of Cloverdale, City Council declaring all weeds growing within the city to be a public nuisance and declaring its intention to remove and abate the same upon specified private properties under and in accordance with the provisions of the City of Cloverdale Municipal Code, Chapter 8.16, entitled Weed Abatement.
I second it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lans?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Moving on, new business. I1, approving a professional services agreement with ArcSign. Is that how you say that? ArcSign, thank you. Engineering, to provide engineering services for design, programming, and integration of SCADA improvements and engineering services during construction.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, and council. The, the item before you is a, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with ArcSign. ArcSign is a professional engineering firm that specializes in what we call SCADA systems. SCADA stands for Supervised Control and Data Acquisition. The, the city was fortunate to have received a grant from DWR as part of our need to address the drought. It was a, a, a project award for various projects which included a, a, a new AMI meter system, replacement and rehabilitation of well seven and well eight, and then last but not least, this project. So this project is funded with, largely with grant, grant funding. Currently, the city's water treatment is maintained by, you know, two, two oper, two operators with the assistance of a, a SCADA control system at our water treatment plant. The, the SCADA controls allow for management and monitoring of both our, our wells, but also our treatment plant. As, as of currently, we do not have a SCADA system for our distribution system, which includes our, our pumps and our distribution mains, as well as our, our reservoirs. So the intent with this, this resolution is to enter into an agreement with ArcSign to extend the, the SCADA system citywide to include the, the distribution system, the pumping system, and our reservoir, and our five reservoir sites. So it's a, it's a really critical project that will enable our staff to more quickly respond to waterline breaks within the system or operational issues that may come up from time to time, and, and thus be able to enable the city to be more effective at, at drought management and saving, and saving water. I don't know, is, is our city engineer, I'd like to ask our city engineer, Vanessa Apadaka, to talk a little bit more about the, the scope of work and how it will enable our staff at the water treatment plant to more effectively manage water use, and also some of the kind of follow-up, the, kind of the next steps that are in addition to entering into agreement with, with ArcSign to perform this improvement work.
Good evening. Thank you, David, for that introduction. This is, as David mentioned, this is a key project for the city. It is included on our capital improvement program, but not for several years. But we had an opportunity to go after some grant funding, and we were able to, you know, successfully get the grant funding. And so we've moved this project forward using those funds. The SCADA acquisition, so like David mentioned, currently the water treatment plant and the supply wells are controlled by SCADA. The project here is to extend that into the distribution system, seven remote sites. The proposal in front of you includes some design-build services, including system investigation, design engineering, control panel procurement, equipment and licensing procurement, programming and configuration, installation procurement, system startup and testing, bid and contract support services, and engineering services during construction, and lastly, providing operation manuals. There are some elements that ArcSign is not able to do, and so that, those are under the procurement tasks. We will look to somebody to fabricate the panels, to obtain licensing and equipment, and also to install some portions of the SCADA system. So there will be a couple of, of bids associated with this project. And, and of course, we're going to be here as, as a city engineer and owner's agent overseeing the whole thing and administering the grant all along the way. The fee estimate for ArcSign's work here is $423,100. And the budget, the budget allocated for this task is approximately $679,900. We are anticipating some additional costs to come from city staff, but largely we're expecting this project to be grant-funded.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yes. Yeah. Hi, Vanessa. Thanks for your hard work on this. It's great when we can see, you know, the really big, long SIP kind of chipped away out little by little, and this is a really great, this is a really great project. And, you know, I just would remind everybody too that it's, it's not just necessarily the savings of water, but water is energy. Every time you move it, it costs energy and it adds to our, our city's overhead. So I just wanted to go to attachment two in the last page, page 16, if you have it in front of you, Vanessa. Under work not included, I just was wondering if you, if you could kind of walk us through just some of the, the biggies on this list, like which one of them are kind of, you know, we couldn't, we just couldn't swing, couldn't swing at this time, maybe phase two, with some of the balance of the, what we're anticipating we're spending and what we budgeted for it, be able to cover some of this stuff. Just was wondering if you could kind of just take, take us through what we're not getting on page 16.
And I think this was something, you know, in fine tuning, we have a pretty robust SCADA team on our, on our West Yost staff. But understanding that ArcSign has been working with the city for many years, they are the most familiar with the city's system. And so it's kind of a joint effort between our team as the city engineer and the ArcSign team to be able to deliver a comprehensive project. And so this is something that was kind of worked out between our team and the ArcSign team, just to kind of separate the tasks accordingly. We may also, in addition to the procurement services, we may also be looking at a wireless survey. But that's, that's something that we've got to kind of dig in on to see if it's even needed. Anyways, this is just something that I, in theory, if these tasks are needed, we would, we West Yost, as your city engineer, would fill in the blanks.
Okay. No, thank you. And actually, you teased out, like, I was kind of wondering about number two, the radiopath study. But if we're taking another route on that, then that makes a lot of sense. So, or if we're applying it, if we can, if we can grab information that we're using in other departments on some of this stuff, then I can see where some of it would be duplicative and doesn't, doesn't need to be in the scope of, of this project. So that does help. Thank you.
And, and Councilmember Bagby, if I can just add on the, the radiopath study, we, we recently performed a similar analysis-
Right.
-for our, our AMI advanced metering infrastructure project, because it will be relying on, you know, telecommunications systems for-
Right.
-for communication purposes. So that, that certainly will be looking at to incorporating the findings of that, that study into, into this-
Right. Yeah, some of it's duplicative, and yeah, don't need to, don't need to spend money twice. So, no, I appreciate it. I just wanted to want, find out if there were any highlights that we needed to look forward to. But yeah, Vanessa explained it really well. Thank you.
Else?
I have one quick question. Hey, Vanessa, and thank you for, for presenting that again also. I just have, similar to the question I may have asked yesterday, and, and just so everybody knows, is we have the existing SCADA system over there at the water plant right now, and, and I'm kind of wondering, with the existing and the new SCADA system, are they going to be able to talk, I mean, are they going to be compatible with each other? We have a new system for all the wells, South Crest and all that, and then this one. Are, are we going to have a, a break in service right there? Or is there going to be, are they going to upgrade the one that's existing right now? Or I just want to make sure those two will jive, you know?
They'll jive a little bit. We, we are looking, so, you know, as, as technology does, it becomes obsolete. Whether that's planned or not is, is interesting side discussion. But things do get obsolete. And so ArcSign has advised us that they are really recommending that we upgrade some of the components at the treatment plant, because they're largely unsupported. It's a matter of, of unsupported hardware and software. And so they have provided a separate scope for the water treatment plant work. They have not provided a fee for that. I think that that could potentially be a future project. The, the SCADA to the remote sites is, is doable. It's just not their preferred integration method. I think we just have to look at the budget and look at the dollars. Upgrading the water plant didn't really fit in with the drought, kind of the drought needs of the grant funding. Whereas the remote sites, it was an obvious connection to help with the drought funding. And so, and so anyways, that was kind of the nexus for why we went after just the remote sites instead of upgrading the treatment plant. But yes, at some point, we will probably move forward with the recommendation to look at the treatment plant as well.
Thank you, Vanessa. I appreciate it.
And just to dovetail on the city engineer's comments, we'll, we'll be working with ArcSign on development of the cost proposal for upgrading the treatment plant as well. We, we think it, you know, it probably makes a lot of sense to make sure that the, the systems communicate properly with one another as we, as we do this, this upgrade and improvement. We'll certainly need to look at that in the context of the, the financial plan that was adopted by council for the Water Enterprise, see how that fits into the, the rates, see if there's any impact there. But we, we will be looking at this closely- any impact there, but we will be looking at this closely to see if there's an opportunity to do some concurrent work. Seems like it makes sense, and it is overall, you know, intended to really improve operations and, you know, also save person power with respect to management and operation of the system, so I think that's a good thing, especially with a two-person crew at the treatment plant. We will always be mindful that of the technology, unfortunately, it does get outdated, and it's time to upgrade, and it just may be time for us to start looking at that. So we will definitely do that. That's obviously not fully developed yet in what's before you tonight, but staff is recommending that we move forward with this work. As, and it was indicated, this is funded by DWR grant, there is a deadline for implementation, and we're currently on schedule with the grant requirements, and approval of the agreement tonight would allow us to make sure we're being timely with the grant funding.
Thank you. Anything? All open up to the public. Anyone have any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Well, is there a resolution, David?
There is a-
Oh, there it is. You know what? I skipped right over it, and I even underlined a section of it, so yes, there's a resolution. Sorry about that. I'll offer it by title only, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a professional services agreement with ArcSign Engineering to perform engineering services for SCADA improvements.
That scene, I put it in your brain. I'm like, oops, that's my fault.
I'd like to second that.
Right, so we have a first and a second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby? Councilmember Morgenstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. All right, we're moving into subcommittee reports. Finance, Admin, and Police. Next meeting is August 7th. Do you have anything you want to discuss on that? Planning and Sustainability?
Next meeting is August 15th.
Public Works? Joint City and School?
August 21st.
Homeless Community Advisory Group?
Next meeting is October 9th.
Thank you. Okay, council member reports. Councilmember Bagby turned hers in written. Does anyone else have anything else? Informational reports? Seeing none. Legislative reports, David?
Mayor, members of council, in your agenda packet, there is a letter of opposition to what's referred to as SB 423. This was a bill that was sponsored by State Senator Weiner that would provide authority to the state of California to build housing on state-owned property without meeting the requirements of the respective jurisdiction. It provides a number of exemptions to local zoning and design review requirements. The League has taken a position of opposition and provided us with a letter addressed to our assembly member. Included in your packet is a letter that follows the form recommended by the League opposing the legislation as it's currently written, to be signed by the mayor, and just seeking your direction, authorization to move forward with the mayor's signature of the letter as currently provided.
I just, if I may, just comment, you left out a big detail, that's not just state-owned but state-leased property, and I think we all acknowledge that we have a housing crisis in this state, but this is, this legislation in particular is not how to do it, so I can't imagine that we're going to have a lot of opposition to supporting, we're going to support the opposition letter, if I think I got that right. I skipped dinner tonight, so that's why I'm a little, I'm a little lope-er than usual, so, but yeah, I think it's, I think it's going to be a pretty easy lift for our, for our assembly member and our senator to oppose this.
I think the housing crisis is important, but it's important to follow guidelines that have been, you know, purposely set for reasons of, you know, to make housing livable and make it sturdy and make it earthquake safe, et cetera, and so I agree, I support this letter.
It even actually circumvented the Coastal Commission, which, that was a really big kicker for me, so, it sounds like we have-
We have consensus, yeah.
...for the opposition letter. Thank you. All right, future agenda items. Oh, I'm sorry, city manager report. I passed right over you. That was just a letter about, do we have to on that? Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. Any public comments on this, supporting the opposition letter? See no hands in the virtual, so bring it back. Thank you. David, you're up.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items, well, three items I'd like to provide an update, a report out on to the council. First of which, I just want to mention that the mayor and council members' meeting is scheduled for August 10th. I've heard from Councilmember Bagby, she's already RSVP'd. If any of you would like to attend, please let me know, or feel free to directly respond to the City of Healsburg's request for, wanting to attending. Likewise, on September 20th is the annual League Conference that will be held in Sacramento this year. I just want to note that I think this week is the last week for priority sign-ups for the League, so that'll be an important conference. If you'd like to attend, there's going to be some good speakers at the conference, and it's always a valuable opportunity to network with your colleagues. And then last but not least, I know there's a tremendous interest in the city's development and construction of the new dog park. We are making considerable progress in moving that project forward. The project is identified to be located adjacent to the train depot. Anybody driving by can see that the grassy area has been recently mowed, it kind of shows the footprint for the proposed dog park. Our community development team, Kevin Thompson and Hector Galvan, have been actively working along with our city engineer on finalizing the plans. We are going to be seeking informal bids to perform the construction work necessary to ensure we have an accessible path. Likewise, installing a barrier fence and extending some utilities to the site that will primarily, at this point, is water, so we have a fountain available for our canine friends and their companions. So that work is in progress. We are asking for, we're providing roughly a 10-day to two-week turnaround time on the informal bids. We'll be bringing back a ward of contract after we've reviewed the bids to council for your approval and support, and then we'll obviously be able to take a look at, you know, the budget, make sure that the bids are in accordance with the project budget that council has supported. Our hope is to be able to deliver the project before the end of the year. It's going to be contingent upon the schedule of the contractor that we select, what the timing is for them to actually perform the work. I don't think it's significant, but we'll certainly, once we receive the bids or review those, and we'll be entering into negotiations with a preferred contractor, we'll talk about, you know, what the timeline looks like in terms of performing the necessary improvements. So fingers crossed, we'll have this project delivered before the end of the year. We're hoping maybe the fall, we won't get as much rain as we did last year, and it'll be dry and it'll allow us to move forward with getting that project completed. But we've, I think we've made a lot of progress thus far, just in terms of the design and planning, and really the next steps is to move to actual construction. So we will be providing an update, hopefully in the near future, in both the newsletter and maybe even our local Cloverdale Connect. So more to come on this. Ultimately, again, it will come back to council for your award of bid to the selected contractor, the recommended contractor. Did also want to mention that the, we are expecting to begin the installation of these new smart meters beginning next week. There's a webpage on the City of Cloverdale's website dedicated to providing information about what we call the smart meters or the AMI infrastructure. There is going to be an article in the Cloverdale Connect that we expect will come out the first week in August, providing an answer to frequently asked questions that we think the community may have about that project. It's pretty exciting, and I want to acknowledge our Public Works Director has been coordinating with our team on that. It's going to be, it's going to be a big lift for our staff, and we fully expect, you know, the community to see that work happening. As part of that, there are going to be door hangers that provide additional information once those meters are swapped out, and some tips for our customers, but we're excited that that is, that project is moving forward, and we'll be, you know, providing continuous updates to council on the progress we're making on that project. But that's slated to start next week, the actual, after all the planning and work that's went into it, the actual meter replacements is going to start on Monday next week. End of report, Mayor.
Thank you.
May I put the city, may I put the city manager on the spot? Just something I just realized, I just, this last Tuesday, Wednesday, it would have been this week, I got a notice from the contractors who will be working on the First Street Bridge, probably because I'm within the designated area. I'm just wondering if you wanted to, if you had any information from the county on that, if you wanted to give a report.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Bagby, for the prompt, and this is a good opportunity to share with folks to get the latest city information on our city newsletter. Go to notifyme@cloverdale.net, and we will have an update this week on the, what's called the Crocker Bridge Bike and Pedestrian Passage Project. The city received notification, our city Public Works Director received a notice from the contractor that they are expecting to begin work next week. It was a little bit delayed this year because there is some lane closures that will be required on the bridge that was critical to have the summer bridge installed at Ostie, that got in a little, that was installed a little bit late this year, so the Crocker Bridge project, unfortunately, what was scheduled to be completed all by the end of the current calendar year, because of the delays with the installation of the summer bridge, the project is, the Crocker Bridge pedestrian project is now going to be done in two phases. Phase one will be kind of the structural work, the, all the fabrication work that's necessary to support the ultimately, the new bridge crossing, and the bridge crossing will be installed, the formal trail, or path will be installed in June, starting in June of 2024, so there's an expected completion date at the end of 2024. But I know our county Public Works Director is working diligently to move that project along, but we'll, the community will probably see some lane closures along Crocker Bridge as this work proceeds, so, again, keep posted in our newsletter, and we'll provide updates as we receive them from the county.
Future agenda items? Seeing none, meeting adjourned 6:42.